Hi, everyone. This is Mariah Kurtz, the Town Planner. And you are listening into the Board of Selectmen meeting and the Irving Center visioning presentation. And I just want to let everyone know that this is going to be recorded. And hopefully you all found your way here okay. Right now, everyone is going to be muted. And once we get started and the Board of Selectmen say it's okay, I will be able to unmute people. First, we'll have the UMass students give their presentation and then following that, I'll be able to unmute people to and you'll be able to see that there's a hand raising tool. If you click that icon, it will let me know and I'll be able to unmute you when you have a question. So we're going to wait for the end of the presentation when the UMass students present. And then I'll allow questions and I'll go first through people who have their hands raised. And then if there's more questions, then we can go from there. And with that, I will turn this over to Jake.
Thank you, Mariah. Only other comment would be there's a question box. You can also type your question if you wish to do that as opposed to raise your hand and ask it in person. Thank you, everyone, for joining. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order at 6:34 PM. As Mariah mentioned, this is a recorded Board of Selectmen meeting compliant with Governor Baker's modification of the open meeting law to allow for a video conference meeting. First item of business on our agenda tonight is discussion of COVID-19. And we have one item to cover in regards to that. Governor Baker did extend the stay order and the essential directives at the state level from May 4th to until May 18th now, 5/18. So I would propose to the board, do we wish to mimic that currently? Our essential, local essential orders and stay orders and restrictions are all through May 4th to coincide with the prior state directive. So if we wish to extend the same, then I would entertain a motion to extend our directives to align with the state at May 18th. Or any discussion if we feel differently.
I think we should follow the state for now.
Agreed.
Was that a motion, Pete?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we follow the recommendations set forward by the state.
We'll extend our orders till through, through May 18th.
To May 18th, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right. That is the only other item of business. The primary reason for this meeting is to go through the Irving Visioning Project that the UMass students who are present were undertook for us and we're all, I think, very excited to hear and see the work that they've done. We have Professor Erica Zeikis with us who guided them through this process, for lack of a better term, and I'm very excited from what I've heard and seen to hear the presentation. So at this point, I will give it to Mariah, Professor Zeikis, or the students, however they want to present. So the floor is yours.
Thank you. Mariah, I just want to make sure that all of the students are unmuted and if Abigail is here, she has a document to screen share.
Okay, can all of the UMass students raise their hand? Because I don't know all of your names and I want to make sure that I get all of you.
I'm going to put myself on mute and anyone else who wants to, who's not talking, just to, just in case for background noise.
Great. Thanks for bearing with us while we sort ourselves out.
Sorry, it's going to take a second. There's a lot of you.
I mean, having just completed my final last night, I can understand this must be hopefully exciting for the students to present as part of their semester and wrapping things up. So it's exciting.
I hope so. We had a practice run this afternoon. Today is the last day of classes. Exams follow, but they're all seniors and so this is a really great way to finish.
It's very exciting. Doing online classes, finals, we're all due by today, so I'm wrapped up.
For you.
For this semester.
Abigail, you should have presenter powers and be able to share.
Yes, can everyone see this?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
I'm going to try to make it full screen.
Okay.
Can you still see this?
We can see your screen. It's not the full screen mode, but we can definitely see the images, so. There we go. Well, that's closer.
Maybe I can show my name screen.
Better? Beautiful. There we go. All right, I'm going to get things started and the students are going to follow after me so that we're going to move through the, move through a portion of the document tonight and the students are going to take the reins after I finish this brief introduction. So good evening and thank you so much for this opportunity to share our work with you tonight. My name is Erica Zeikis and I have the great pleasure of teaching a UMass Architecture Design Studio focused on public interest design. This group of seniors has been learning about architecture design in the real world through a collaboration with the town that began back in January. Thank you so much to Brian Smith and Mariah Kurtz, who have been extremely helpful in setting up numerous opportunities for us to connect with resources and residents of all ages. We appreciate the time and contributions of so many members of the Irving community and Kelly will expand on that in just a minute. Of course, this semester did not play out exactly as any of us had expected, but we have been working remotely and are excited to share this vision for Irving Center with you. As a group of architecture students, this study focuses on issues of the built environment, the physical places and spaces such as sidewalks, parks, street signs, and buildings. But we also heard and incorporated ideas about community engagement and events. Throughout our time, we heard much pride in Irving as a whole and in Irving Center in particular. Residents are proud of the town's history and natural resources and in the community that you've built here. Irving Center is not without issues, some of which are common to many small towns and others that are quite specific. And the students worked in teams to research and address the topic areas of historic character and signage, traffic and pedestrian safety, green spaces and recreation, and social and physical infrastructure. What you'll see and hear in tonight's presentation represents a range of options that we hope will serve as a catalyst for conversations about the future of Irving Center. We look forward to time for questions after the presentation. And I'll hand it off to Kelly.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Kelly Gershkov and I will be introducing our research and community involvement for this project. Our class has done a large amount of research regarding Irving Center and the surrounding area to help us properly piece together what needed to be addressed in our visioning plan with respect to its users, both residents and visitors. It is clear to us that Irving has a lot of potential with its natural beauty and recreational opportunities. However, it is sometimes overlooked by visitors driving through on Route 2. We found that while Route 2 plays a large role in bringing tourists to the area, it is also known to create issues of safety as cars drive through at high speed with little motivation to stop. This partially is because visitors don't always know when they're in Irving and additionally might not be aware of what Irving has to offer them with a lack of signage and information available to tourists. While there are parks and memorials in Irving, attractive public green spaces could be brought to Irving Center in a way that draws people in. While at quick glance, visitors might not see Irving's charm, through implementing things like public art and more community events, people might be able to come together better to see Irving as the beautiful and quaint town it really, really is. Beyond our initial findings, an important part of the design process involved collaborating with various community members. While we developed a base knowledge of Irving with our research, community members are the real experts, having firsthand knowledge and experience living there. Through this process, we got the opportunity to speak with some wonderful people who really care about the town and offer new perspectives that we otherwise might not have found in our research. Each week, we visited Irving as a class. Groups of, groups of us were in meetings with business owners, the senior center, and town officials and residents at Town Hall. Each group offered unique feedback, sharing their personal day-to-day experiences, their histories, and ideas for future development in Irving. Despite different ages, backgrounds, and community roles, common themes emerged from these meetings. Some takeaways included the need for safer crosswalks, more available parking, and the addition of public restrooms under difficult circumstances regarding the town water regulations. In a larger sense, it seemed that attracting and accommodating to tourists is where Irving falls short. Suggestions on how to better promote businesses and facilities in a way that is geared towards the recreational brand Irving embodies were discussed, as well as implementing a visitor center that could help provide information and direction. But our community involvement did not stop there. With our visits to Irving, we also collaborated with the kids at Irving Elementary School's after-school program for kindergarten to third graders. Each week, we developed a curriculum for the children with intentions of designing something that would represent their views of Irving within a collaborative structure. Unfortunately, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we were unable to finish our collaborative efforts with the interest of social distancing. However, we were able to gather information from our time spent at Irving Elementary School that would help inform the visioning plan. With a series of hands-on activities, we encouraged the children's expression of their relationship between the community of Irving and themselves. From this, we gathered their familiarity of various buildings and landmarks in Irving as their main connection seemed to stem from their family and school relationships. In addition, we identified the importance of play and how they value the parks within their community. For community members who were unable to attend meetings in person, an online survey was posted on the town website in order to gain input from as many people as possible. We were aware that many people had to work during the day when our class was scheduled to visit, so we wanted to provide an opportunity to hear their voices too. The survey asked about town identity, how they would like to see the future of Irving progress, and the specific changes they imagined for Irving. And Abigail can show some of the pictures we took collaborating. We have some activities here and it was a great experience overall. And now Nicole.
Hi, guys. My name is Nicole and I'm going to be introducing our visioning plan for Irving Center. This is the map that we designed collaboratively, which identifies our proposals for the town of Irving specifically for Irving Center. Starting on the eastern edge of our map, you can see that we have identified a space for public art on Route 2 leading into the town center. Some other places for public art would include the water tower and the bridge in Chu Riverfront Park. As we continue along the map, you'll see that we have implemented a comprehensive plan for pedestrian safety, which includes adding and improving upon safety measures for crosswalks, expanding sidewalks, and adding green buffers to help improve pedestrian safety. Some other things are on this map are new street lighting and flag signage that are part of our signage proposal that my classmate Victoria will give you some more information on a little bit later. Two larger scale projects that you can see here are the Town Hall Lawn and Veterans Memorial renovation, as well as the new park design at Henson Court that Ryan will speak to later on. Henson Court also happens to be the location for our westbound bus stop proposal. Right across the street, you can see our design for the eastbound bus stop proposal at the Arch Street parking lot. As we move down into Riverfront Park, we have identified space and examples for community events. And the last thing that I would like to address on this map are the Usher Mill and Pearlby Care Buildings, as well as the Irving Water Tower, which students worked on independently to create designs for these sites. That being said, I'm going to hand it off to Victoria so she can talk to you about Irving's historic character and her proposal for town signage.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Victoria and I'm one of two people that focused on Irving's historic character. And I'll just give you a quick summary of that. So through research, we discovered Irving's rich industrial and native histories and appreciated the historic buildings that helped to keep them alive. Considering Irving's current efforts to rebrand through the creation of a logo and slogan, we felt that signage would be a great opportunity to develop this unification. Signage could enhance recognition, promote recreational activity in town, elevate Irving's historic character, and advertise local businesses. We have proposed a comprehensive signage family that operates on multiple scales, including vehicular and pedestrian. We have elected to utilize materials familiar to Irving Center like wood and stone. This spread shows some of the applications of our signage proposal, which include on the top row, paneled signage with historical and wayfinding information that could be fixed to existing fences, such as the one pedestrians pass as they walk over the brook toward the Town Hall. There are also trailhead markers and trail map signage for hikers and below, some vehicular scale signage that identify Irving and major attractions like the Riverfront Park. On the next slide, you will see our designs for new streetlight flag signage that simultaneously identify Irving to drivers and pedestrians and also show up views of Irving and images of some recreational activities that residents and visitors participate in.
Okay, thanks, Victoria. Hi, everyone. My name is Alyssa Di Senzo. So on to traffic and pedestrian safety. We, as a class, recognize that Irving Center is defined by automobile travel and is bisected by Route 2. We know this brings a lot of positivity to your town, but there can also be some challenges that it presents. So we have created some design approaches that will allow for the streets to be safe and comfortable for all means of travel. Next slide, please. To begin, the next three slides are an overview of various sidewalk designs and how they are used in other communities similar to Irving. As shown on this slide, we give examples of bike lane options. And here, we show possible examples of pedestrian lanes. And finally, we landed on designing a mixed bike and pedestrian lane. This option is the most feasible due to the extra space and property boundaries we had to work with. Next slide. Here is an example of how this design would look like in Irving Center right outside the Town Hall. We were able to extend the north side of the street for an eight-foot sidewalk with a five-foot green space buffer for a safety and sound barrier from the street. On the south side of the street with less space, we were able to widen the sidewalk to six feet. Next slide. A common concern we heard from Irving residents is that people have a hard time safely crossing Route 2. We recognize that during large events, police officers sometimes need to be present in order to ensure safety. So we have designed two new crosswalks that are more centrally located. We have researched new lighting and signage strategies to be implemented. Let's start by looking down at the bottom left-hand corner and working our way up. Here, we have a double-sided crosswalk sign with rectangular flashers that sit on each side of the road. Then there are in- roadway warning lights that are illuminated by cars headlights at night. Following is yield to pedestrian signage in the center of the road. And finally, sensor-activated courtesy lamps for people waiting to cross during the evening. Next slide. We recognize that public bus transportation stops in Irving Center, so we have reviewed various areas where permanent bus stop designs could be implemented based off of the average bus turning radius and, of course, safe and accommodating locations. Indicated on this slide in blue, we have ultimately landed on two locations that sit adjacent from each other on Route 2, access via Arch Street and Henson Court. Next slide. Hello?
We can hear you now.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay. So at these new bus turnarounds, we have designed a bus shelter to ensure comfort and safety. Our modern design includes interior lighting activated by solar panels, interior seating and signage, as well as exterior, as well as additional exterior amenities. And that concludes traffic and pedestrian safety.
Okay. You guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Ryan Lahane and I was tasked with designing potential green and recreational spaces in Irving Center. Go to the next slide. My main goals of both the Veterans Memorial and Town Hall Lawn Renovation was to design a clearly seen, welcoming, and easily accessible entrance to both the Irving Town Hall and the Veterans Memorial beside it. You go to the next slide. It was also important to me to include a seating area in front of the Veterans Memorial as a way to make visitors at the memorial feel more comfortable and encourage them to spend as much time there as they desired. I also wanted to propose a clear pathway leading to the front Town Hall door if it ever was decided to be used as a main entrance in the future. You go to the next slide, Abigail. So if the current Veterans Memorial was to be renovated, I think it would be nice to have a single memorial dedicated to all service members rather than a separate memorial dedicated to each war. The renovated memorial would consist of a single curved granite wall with the names of veterans who served in every war engraved on it, which would be illuminated by floodlights at night. All right, you can go to the next slide. So my next design takes place in Henson Court, adjacent to the Key up Brook, where we are proposing a new bus stop. With this design, I wanted to create a place where pedestrians getting on or off the proposed bus could have a place to sit and wait outside. I wanted to ensure those in the seating area wouldn't be agitated by the noise of ongoing traffic, so I surrounded the area with hedges and included a water feature made using the original steps of the Town Hall to help block out the noise of moving cars. The seating area also extends over the Key up Brook where visitors will find picnic tables. In this plan, you can also see I proposed trident maples to line the sidewalks and the larger northern red oak trees to be placed behind sidewalks on private property. Good, next slide, Abigail. Here, we decided to propose areas on public buildings and landmarks around Irving where art murals could be made as a way to embolden both the overall aesthetic and identity of Irving. And I'll pass it off to Henry.
Hi, everyone. My name is Henry.
Do you mind if I interrupt for one second and just remind people that questions will be taken at the end? I see that there's a couple people who have hands raised. And I want to acknowledge that and just, yeah, remind people that we'll take questions at the end.
Great. Thank you. My name is Henry. My classmate Alex and I focused on the social and physical infrastructures of Irving. And we mostly focused on the community organization that goes on in Irving and the dynamics that exist between Irving Center, Farley, Irving Side. We realized that the residents of Irving Center are looking for a sense of unity and identity and also a reason to bring people into Irving Center. Because as we've discovered by talking to residents, there's this feeling of being maybe forgotten about and left behind because there's a lot of development in Irving Side and a lot of the social centers, like the library, the elementary school, the senior center, all in Irving Side. And therefore, our focus was to kind of investigate in those untapped areas that would bring people to Irving Center and kind of trying to imagine some different ways that Irving Center can become a social center. So if you go to the next slide, my partner Alex focused a lot on the calendar of events that go on in Irving. And part of her research revealed that there is this potential for more seasonal events that could be held in Irving that in hope would become tradition and therefore bringing people to Irving. If you see in red, she has these additions to Irving Center. And some of these ideas were carried in from past master plans that we've discovered, such as the farmer's market, the ice rink. But the Fourth of July carnival, if you go to the next slide, is Alex's proposal. I think this one's kind of fun. I know a few towns have this. I know Amherst. I'm pretty sure Greenfield does as well. But I think it's a great way of bringing community together. All you really need is an open space. It's very portable. But the overall idea here is not specifically about the carnival. It's about turning Riverfront Park into a destination spot with year-round events. Through talking with residents, we've heard some of the challenges of trying to organize events, such as concert series. Many of these people are volunteering their time, like I'm sure you are. And so we're just here to try to help imagine some other ways that this could work. If you go to the next slide, we are transitioning into, each of us took on different independent design projects. Different buildings. Some of us worked on the Usher Mill Building on the Riverfront Park. Some of us worked on the Pearlby Care Building. Some of us worked on the Water Tower. And so this is kind of the latter half of the, of our proposal. So if you go to the next slide, this was my first design project. And continuing the research that Alex and I produced, I designed the renovation of the Usher Mill. And I think I chose this because I think we all recognize the value that the Riverfront Park has in Irving Center and how it could be transformed into this destination spot. As you can see, so in this design, I have a community garden in the bottom of the page. This is a view of the building with the roof off right now, but um you have a community garden, a space for indoor and outdoors farmer's markets, as well as an event space for community events, concerts, meetings. And my focus on the garden was inspired by this nonprofit in Holyoke called Nostrus Raisus. It started with just a few community members who found a lot and they turned it into a community garden. And over the years, it's turned into this amazing resource for Holyoke that provides local food, education, fundraising to the city. And it's a great way for residents to bond with each other. And this ties into the research that Alex and I did with Irving and because of Route 2 and other factors. It's, a lot of residents have to travel a far distance to get their food. They have to drive. They have to drive to other essential resources. And that can be very isolating. I sure know it is for me. And having a resource to produce Irving, having a resource for Irving to produce its own food for people to gather post-pandemic, but to gather and grow food with one another, I think is a very great way to, for the community to build. So going back to the design, I included some sustainable features that I think speak more to the identity of Irving. And also because this site does not have its own running water. I have rainwater collection system with some solar panels, um, highly insulated greenhouse. And that is really the, the quick design of, of the, of the Usher Mill. So moving forward, you're going to see some of my other classmates' design projects. And the next one you have is my classmate Victoria, who also worked on the Usher Mill.
Thanks, Henry. Um, so like Henry, I have proposed a reuse of the Usher Mill Building in the Riverfront Park. Um, I believe that a reuse of the Usher Mill is an opportunity to elevate one of the few remaining artifacts of Irving's bustling industrial history. This proposal explores the potential of the Usher Mill to become a recreational hub and community center for residents and visitors. Here, the mill is restored and becomes a home to a recreational equipment rental and storage facility that will encourage returning visitors. Additionally, a cafe and lounge space is present for park visitors as well as much needed public restaurants. This renovation would create space for two new small businesses and promote recreational activities in green spaces in Irving like the Riverfront Park. Uh, and next you'll see my classmate Alex's proposal for the Usher Mill Building.
Hello, I'm Alex Vona. I had the luxury to interview residents and business owners firsthand and to hear their desires and vision for Irving Center. There was a desire to attract tourists to stay after they climb or hike during the day. And with the addition of town water to Riverside Park, I envisioned there could be a functioning restaurant there. Looking at the plan, on the east side of the building, I located the restaurant, including a stage for live music and a bar to attract young tourists for nightlife. And there's an open air porch for dining on warmer nights. Another desire for the residents was for there to be a place to sit and have a cup of coffee during the day. So on the west half of the Usher Mill Building, I designed a cafe where locals can sit and meet. While I was doing research on social infrastructure of Irving, I saw a need for more spaces where the community can meet in Irving Center. So I attached to the cafe, an extended sitting area designed for people to sit and gather. Some ideas for the use of this space is during the day can be a lounge for people to hang out or even do homework after school. And in the evening, people can rent this space for their own events like meetings or parties.
So next I am going to be walking through an idea of a best sat barn by the Pearlby Care Building, leaving Riverfront Park. So for this idea, one of the major features Irving struggles to address is access to public restrooms. Oftentimes, when visitors stop in Irving to use the bathroom, they have limited options. And they often turn to local businesses along Route Two, who then direct them to the Riverside Park's porta potties. So when touring the Pearlby Care Building, um, we learned that about, we learned about the old Irving barn that used to be located nearby. And given its strong character and historical significance, I thought rebuilding that barn could, um, be a great opportunity to provide some function to the town in a familiar way. So this bus stop located adjacent to the Pearlby Care Building might be the solution to the lack of the public restrooms. Being in a location visible from Route Two with easy vehicular and pedestrian access, this bus stop takes a form similar to the historical barn. The bus stop also offers sheltered seating on the outside with benches that vary in height for all ages, as well as space for wheelchairs in between the benches. Seating is also offered on the inside as well as three bathrooms, two for standard individual bathrooms and one family bathroom that is also wheelchair accessible.
Hi, um, so this is my design for the Irving Water Tower. Um, after talking with a lot of the residents of Irving, we realized that the Water Tower is something that's really important to everybody in the town. It's a symbol of Irving, everybody that drives by or walks by can see it. Um, and the way that it is now, um, we don't really think it represents Irving in the most positive light. Um, so my main intention for this design was to create an identity for the Water Tower that residents and tourists alike can positively associate with the town. Um, the Water Tower would be given a fresh coat of paint um, and could be used either as a space for public art or town signage. Um, as you can see in this drawing, the, um, tower has been painted yellow and given a welcome to Irving sign across it. Um, if you look at the Water Tower now, you can still see remnants of the old welcome to Irving signs. So I figured this is a nice way to pay homage to that. Um, the green space that is surrounding the tower is not currently being used for anything. So I've proposed that it be used for a community garden. Um, as you can see in the drawing on the top right corner, I've designed a raised platform with picnic tables for people to gather, um, to eat lunch, have meetings, anything else that they want to do. Um, also in that drawing, you can see that there are, um, 12 raised planter beds that would serve as a community garden for Irving residents to plant food or other foliage. Um, you can take a closer look at the planter boxes in the drawings below on the bottom right. Um, and with this design, I tried to address two issues, um, that face, that urban residents face. One being a lack of places to acquire fresh fruits and vegetables and also a lack of spaces in Irving Center for the community to come together.
Um, hi, everyone, my name is Abigail Fowler and I designed this renovation in addition to the Pearlby Care Building in Irving Center. I designed it to be a visitor's center and historical museum. The new program and space is meant to bring Irving residents and visitors together to appreciate the history of Irving. When you walk into the building off of, off of the street here, um, you enter a glass vestibule. Um, and to the right, you can go down to the bus stop next to the bus turnaround um, that we designed. And when you would walk in and to your right would either be an info desk and then to your left would be a cafe and gathering space. Um, scattered around would be information about Irving that someone visiting may need. Um, there are public bathrooms, um, which is something missing in the town center currently. Outside, or sorry, um, upstairs would be a historical display of life in Irving in the 19th century, which is something that's being worked on already by the Historical Society in the Pearlby Care Building. And here, um, you can see the bus stop, the cafe and seating area. And then over here would be an outdoor patio to kind of extend that cafe and gathering area outside, um, as well as a footbridge over the Key up Brook, um, connecting to the property that housed Irving Station, um, over here. And this would really allow the Pearlby Care Building to act as the gateway and connection from the heart of the town center down to Riverside Park, which is around this corner. And next is going to be Alyssa with her design.
Thanks, Abigail. Hi, everyone, again, my name is Alyssa. And similar to Abigail, I'm proposing to renovate the Pearlby Care Building into Irving's Visitor Information Center and Historical Museum. I recognize that Irving has a large amount of tourists and having an information center will help safely accommodate them during their travels. Here, visitors can gain knowledge about the recreational activities, stores and eateries Irving and its proud residents have to offer. They can feel secure and informed about their trip, use the new public restrooms and re-energize at the cafe before the remainder of their travels. During one of our visits to Irving Center, I was amazed by the collection of generational artifacts that were currently housed in the Pearlby Care Building. I wanted to do justice to the dream of creating a public museum. So I've designed the upper level of this building to be a museum gallery depicting 19th century life in Irving. The basement will be used as a central storage area for overflow artifacts in order to periodically rotate the displays, along with a temperature controlled room that will allow for specific items to stay preserved. Next slide, please, Abigail. As you can see here, I've added physical additions to the existing building that include a wraparound porch for an inviting entrance and seating overlooking the Key up Brook. In addition, on the south side of the building creates space for essentials such as bathrooms and elevator and new stairs. Looking at the top images, an addition on the west elevation provides ample space for expanding the main floor for a spacious cafe, including an exposed wood ceiling that mirrors the pergola on the east side of the building. I have raised the second floor ceiling to double its height to create a more spacious atmosphere. By doing this, the structure of the building is revealed. This theme of exposed wooden beams is constant throughout my design. So it made sense to continue this over the front porch overhang for both structural and decorative elements. Lastly, I've designed grand floor to ceiling windows to enlarge and brighten the new open floor plan. I know my design will not only accommodate tourists, but will provide a communal space for locals to gather and spend their time. And finally, we just want to say, thank you everyone so much for listening. It has been such a positive experience for us to work with Irving Center and Irving residents. We will now return back to the overall visioning map and we welcome your comments and questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. If it's okay with Jake, I think I'll open it up for public comment. Unless you guys want to make comments and questions first.
I'll just make one comment and then, um, that's fine if we want to take, uh, any, you know, public input and questions before the board. There's a lot here to digest, but, uh, just thank you to all the students, to Professor Zekus. Uh, this is impressive, a lot of exciting things that I've seen in there in, in, in the last 45 minutes. And, uh, I, I don't know if we'll be able to do them all, but I'd love to. They look really, they look really impressive and I think they really, uh, help with an image and a, and a vision and, and what, at least personally, I know we, we've wanted to do, which is to, to, to bring about a, a more cohesive, um, vision and, and, uh, you know, interest to tourists and to residents for the town and, and a better image. So it's very exciting to see and gives us lots of opportunities. So thank you all. Go ahead and open the questions, Mariah.
Okay. Um, let's see, okay, so we have a comment in the questions box from Marcia Bernard saying, "Thank you, UMass students, for all these fresh thoughtful ideas. I love so much of what you have to share." Um, and I see that, uh, Ricky Black, you have your hand raised, um, and I'm not sure. So I have you unmuted and if you want to make a comment, you can unmute yourself. Um, if you go to the top left of the pop-up, there'll be a microphone button and you can click that and you'll be unmuted. No, I'm good, thank you. Do other folks have questions? If you click the hand raise button on the left side of the pop-up window, um, then I can unmute you. Sarah, do you have a question?
Hi, yeah, um, I just wanted to say I really enjoyed, um, seeing the students', uh, presentation. And, um, I especially liked the idea of converting the Usher Mill into the, the greenhouse and, and, um, farmer's market. And, um, I didn't see where you can type your comments, so I thought I would just do that verbally.
Thank you. Jackie?
Hi, I just wanted to say, um, I, I loved the whole presentation. I've lived in Irving a long time and this got me very excited. Um, I was curious, I, I love the wayfinding sides. I thought they were a perfect fit for how we view our, our town. And, um, and the idea of the bus stops on opposing sides was great also. Um, I just had a question on, and it's not really addressed to the students, but it was more, how can we make this happen with a bike lane and all that? Since we don't actually own Route Two, it's a state highway. And would they allow a bike lane on a state highway?
Uh, Brian?
Jackie, we were wondering that exact question. We, we have to figure out how to make our connections, not only in Irving Center, but eventually between the villages more intermodal. So, um, the, the long discussion for well over a decade has been a bike lane that somehow follows the path of Route Two. How do you keep that substantially separate so it's safe? Uh, those are interesting challenges and, and we've begun to at least have that preliminary conversation with Mastut. So they, they are aware that when we do the future improvements for Route Two, we can't only talk about having a vehicle. We need to plan for bus stops. We must plan for, um, a, a, a safe pedestrian, maybe shared use with a bike lane option, that allows demobiles. So important question, but you're right, Mastut's going to have to be a huge player in that.
Thank you, Jackie.
And if I, if I may, one of the things that the students, um, discovered is, I'm sure what you already know, is that space along the side of Route Two, um, gets really squeezed as soon as you get out of Irving Center. And so, um, here are the hopes of having a multi-modal, um, protected pathway, at least on the north side of the street, um, for the half mile of Irving Center, allows people to get to Riverfront Park, um, to all of the businesses. And then of course, to the side streets where people live. And what's kind of cut off in the map at the moment, um, is the hope that, the, uh, road on the other side of the river, um, could become a, a pathway or a trail as well, although it gets rather steep perhaps.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I have a comment from Barbara Friedman. Amazing Designs, wondering whether the Usher Building was ever considered for a new town hall. So many beautiful ideas, thank you. Um, I guess I'll speak to whether it's being considered for a new town hall. Um, as we think about what the future of town hall is, as it needs new, new work done, it needs renovation and it has kind of new space needs. I think, you know, every building that we have in town that is, uh, you know, potentially available is, is going to be considered. I think that the, the Usher Mill Building, as a lot of the students I'm sure discovered, it has, you know, a lot of challenges to use that building. But I think it's very interesting because it, it would keep town hall, um, on the same side of town that it, it currently is and frees up some of the space constraint, constraints of the current site. But as we consider work to be done at town hall, we're considering renovation, we're considering new construction, uh, we're considering renovation of other buildings. Uh, we're, we're taking it all in and then, uh, we'll have some feasibility studies done, to try to, you know, with professional help, work out what the, what the different scenarios are and present that to the Board of Selectmen. Um, Betty Lou Mallett? Do you have a question?
Can you hear us?
Yep.
Okay, we have two questions, one Betty has one and I have one. Great job with the presentation, a lot of great ideas. Financially though, is this something that could be put towards like getting grants or whatever to help pay for this? Is this something, Brian, that's available out there?
You're muted, Brian.
You would think after almost two months of this, I'd be used to this, I'm sorry. Um, Peter, yes, uh, the short answer is yes. Peter, yes. The short answer is yes, but obviously that's a very complex topic. No one, no one source is going to fund this all. I think we needed, we needed these fresh eyes and these new, these new ideas to, to come to us to spur our creativity and our interest. As a community, if, if you all can help us and the board identify what projects you, you like the most. And the ones that really speak to you as a priority, we can try to work those things into a larger grant application. But in the smaller projects, I mean, the, the pedestrian safety alone is a massive project. And as we work with, with Mastot on repairs to Route Two, that's something that we can work into those contracts. So the itself does not have to be the applicant, but we may be able to partner with our state colleagues on those improvements. But if we were to do an ADA improvement project, say for the Probe Care Building. We may be able to incorporate some of these additional renovations and wrap them all together. So you get a sense of renovation.
Okay, Betty?
Can I just add one comment to that? For Henderson Court specifically, I did put in a grant application to renovate that green space in the fall I submitted. And I found out this spring that, that we didn't get that grant. But I've been on the lookout for other grants that are applicable to be used downtown. Offers the, the federal government offers some and then there's some through, you know, private foundations. And so I'm always on the lookout for those and part of my position that was created here is to apply for grants. So definitely there's a lot that is being proposed in this and I think I'll echo what Brian said in that. Having the ideas is a huge benefit because when you do write a grant application, you have to have a very clear concept to be able to get. For it. This takes a lot of the legwork of, of coming up with those ideas. And then I can fully flesh them out, figure out a budget and apply for that funding.
Good. This is, this is Betty Lou Mallett and thank you very much. It's, it was a great presentation. I enjoyed it very much. I know it was a lot of hard work. Peter and I, I don't know if we were just not in the area at the time. So we could participate in any of the questions, but it, it looks wonderful and I really, really appreciate it where. It would bring the town back together. We've been here for thirty-three years and have seen a lot of changes. And a lot of things in Irving Center have been removed, so this would bring back a lot. And we do have the issue of, of crossing Route Two. We, we understand with the bus stops and everything for Irving Center. So I think it was very well done. I was wondering if I could have a copy of this PowerPoint presentation. I do have some town individuals who are older individuals who would probably love to see this. They don't have the opportunity to get online and be able to see this presentation. So if it would be possible, if I could get a copy of this PowerPoint presentation and maybe make copies of it. And distribute it to some of my elderly friends who don't have the access to the computers. So they could at least get an idea of the hard work that was given.
Betty Lou, I can absolutely print out a few copies of this and we can figure out a way for me to leave them in the town hall for. For you to pick up and distribute.
Okay.
I'm also going to post, the, the students put together a final report, which is much longer than this PowerPoint. And I'll be posting that onto the website for anyone who wants to take a closer look at that. And if the students are okay with it, they could also send me this PowerPoint and I can post that on that page as well. That way, I know that we went through this, you know, at a speed reasonable for a public meeting, but there's a lot of detail that went into this. But, you know, it takes some time to sit down with it and, and read through. And the report has even more detail than this presentation did. So there's a lot of beautiful maps to look at. And I'll post those onto the website under the town planning page and people can take a look. And I definitely encourage folks to take a look at that and then email me with any feedback that you want. Since I'll be using this to inform some of the work going forward in Irving Center. If there's things that you, you know, like Brian said, things that you see as a huge priority, I would love to hear that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It looks like we have a message from Bretta. Who is the clerk for the Recreation Commission. "I wanted to congratulate the students on their presentation and thoughtful creative ideas. I appreciate the emphasis on visual appeal in the public spaces from the street view with public seating and walkways that link park businesses. Park businesses, town offices and the historical society. The walkways and presence of pedestrians on Main Street are well considered and would go a long way towards slowing down Route Two traffic and bringing back interest in the town for tourists and the town center for residents." Thank you. And it looks like, let's see, Linda, did you have some questions or comments?
Yeah, I just want to say that as someone who's been in town for thirty-five years and has taken a series of three dogs that cross Route Two in order to go past the Usher Point and into Wendell State Forest. I really enjoyed. And in regard to the safety issues of crossing the road. It might be nice to not have to run anymore.
Thank you, Linda.
So I'm not seeing any other hands raised. I do see other comment from Bretta. In particular, I love the idea of using the railroad bridge as a space for public art. And Barbara, the library director, said when the library reopens, it would be great to present again for the public. I realize students may not be available. And Barbara, I can definitely talk to you about this. If the students aren't available, I'd be happy to do some form of this presentation. For more folks to come see.
Think, just a comment, Mariah, in regards to the last one, I think having kind of what Betty Lou mentioned as well. Maybe having copies of this that we could do, you know, bound up or, or in a, in a report style available in. The senior and community center and the, in the public library and in places like that, have a couple of copies available for, for viewing. Once, you know, hopefully we can, we can reopen those buildings and have gathering. But another place is for people to see this because this document, I'm sure it's going to be something we, we talked about and worked from for quite a while.
I agree completely. I think that's a great idea. Joseph, I'm going to unmute you. Do you have comments?
Yes, thanks, thanks so much. So I'm Joseph Kupchinsky. I'm the Director of Civic Engagement and Service Learning at UMass Amherst. And, you know, with, and a colleague of Erica's in the Architecture Department. So I just wanted to congratulate the students on a really amazing work for, for your town. And I was wondering if I could ask the students a question about their engagement with community members. It's, you know, the, I think Kelly outlined a whole bunch of different engagement strategies that they had early on in the project. And I wonder if the students could talk about what were the kind of key engagement with community members that actually helped them kind of craft their plan? What was the kind of like essential meeting or comment or person? Or just overall comment that helped them really develop this very comprehensive and really interesting project?
That's a great question. I'm going to let the students popcorn style unmute yourselves because it sounds complicated to try to raise hands each time. So if you guys want to just unmute yourselves and make a comment, that's fine.
Hi, Joseph. It's Kelly. I can start by saying they were all so fun to experience. Each one was very informal. It was more like a conversation and kind of just open. People bouncing off ideas. We always would go in with questions to help guide. The information towards the vis, visioning plan. But everyone was free to say what was on their mind. We were just there to listen and take in what they had to say. And we just wanted to apply it as best we could in these different areas. But, um, yeah, we had three main different meetings with the business owners, then the community center. I mean, the senior center and then the town hall. So we got a good range of different community members. And, you know, we found similarities, but also differences and it was just a great experience. Anyone else want to jump in? Feel free.
Yeah, this is Victoria. I just wanted to talk about the, the town meeting we went to, which was the last time that we got to meet in Irving in person. Before we went, we were like, oh, we don't know how many people will, will go or how talkative people would be. And as soon as we start bringing up some of these ideas, people, you know, ran with it. And it's really, it was great to work with a community so invested in the future of the town. And I was just really impressed. It was a, like a blessing to work with people who care so much about the community that they live in. And wanted to see this stuff happen. So it was really nice to work for people who were very invested.
This is Henry. I would also like to give a shout out to our. Maybe most interesting collaboration, which was with the students of the elementary school. I don't know. It was, I think it was a new experience for many of us to try to work with first graders as design consultants. And it was surprisingly very helpful. Like just learning about their lives, learning about what's important to them. And realizing just like stories are very impactful. Having them tell stories about themselves made, helped a lot of us get a good perspective. About how the town works and what it's like to be a six-year-old in Irving.
Do any other students want to make comments? Okay, I am not seeing any more hands raised or any more questions. Selectmen, do you have more comments or questions?
I would, Bill Benbury, Selectmen, I, I would just like to, to add to the conversation. I'm very impressed at, at the study and all the work that was done. And I only wish that Irving Center was larger so that we could incorporate all that came out tonight. Because I, I think, I, I didn't see one thing that I didn't think worked in the center of Irving. And I, I hope and I, I know that. There's going to be a lot of interest in seeing this work and some part of this work. There's so much work to be done. Clearly, the. Crossing is, is a large, is, is a big concern and slowing down the vehicles and bathrooms. And places for people to be able to go, laboratories. We've. We've developed the Riverfront Park, which I think is a, an excellent first start to. To making Irving Center a viable place to, to come to and to stop and to, to rest. And, and enjoy the area and to search the area and find out what else is there. As they pass through and. Environmental affairs. The park section of environmental field was, was instrumental in, in, and, and. Giving the grant that made renovation to Riverfront Park possible. And they're still available to us as a resource to continue to expand on the park. I know one of the conversations that did come out of that whole process is that. More than once, I think the question was asked, can they come outside of the park and do some things? And the program doesn't allow for that. But they still, they still are a very viable resource and a resource that we should continue to look at. Because there are some parts of the park that, that, that still need to. That still need some improvements as well as the building itself. So I think that's one resource and it's, it's grant money that if the town matches it, we can get a lot of work done as well. And Mass DOT, Department of Transportation is the other part of that whole project. That anything we do is going to affect the roadway and we can't really do anything without working on the roadway. So that's a very important part of revamping Irving Center. And I know after tonight, I'm excited about moving forward. And how can we move forward and make this a reality as opposed to. Video and paper and just conversation. So I'm sold. I'm on board and ready to go to work. Thank you. Thank you, UMass.
I'd like, I'd like to say Pete Sanders, Select Board member. The students did an excellent job. It, it's, it's, the presentation was wonderful. It's given us a lot of thoughts and ideas. We're going to have a lot to go over and, and, you know, hopefully we could do a few of these things. I, I would like to think we could and make it happen. And, and the uses for the Usher Building. I, I did a field trip with Mariah at a, at another location and it's, I, I can see some of the ideas there hopefully following through. So, yeah, once again, a, a great job by the students. I'm, I'm very impressed and. We, we, we got some work to do, I think.
Thank you both. My fellow Selectmen covered pretty much everything, but I'll, I'll just add a couple of comments. I agree. I appreciate all this work that went into this. It, it's amazing to see it and I'd love to see it come to life. Hopefully in, in maybe even less than five years, but maybe in five, 10 years you come back and, and drive through and it will look something like something you envisioned on this project. And, and you can see it in, in place and, and, and doing what it's supposed to for the vision. So that, that would be exciting and I hope that, that comes to fruition. There's so many items in here that, that were exciting to see and, and even give us other ideas as, as. Pete mentioned about how we could take this vision and expand it across the rest of town in other areas and other places where we have similar challenges or similar ideas about trying to bring, you know, all of Irving vision together. And the bus stop ideas, you know, both of them very interesting. Hoping that we can do something there. The Usher Mill renovations, you know, things that really seem to bring together the industrial past. Green space and green energy and, and those sorts of things, which are all areas that we, we look at and focus on. Wayfinding and signage has been a common discussion, as Mariah and Brian both know, that I've had with them and all of us have for a little while about trying to bring that image and consistency through our town. And we have, you know, surrounding towns, especially in the Hawk Trail and such that have done some of that. And, and what I've seen here is some amazing ways we could do it in our own way and, and really be Irving and that's exciting to me. I hope that the students enjoyed the project. I know it's, it's schoolwork at the end of the day, but this, at least as a viewer and as a recipient of, of the work product that you all put in, this is exciting and, and it's, it's amazing. And it will definitely be a foundation for us, you know, developing some of these projects. As, as Peter Mallett mentioned and, and Mariah, this is a foundation to delivering, you know, what we need in a grant application and, and really visioning that out because this is part of what we'll need to, to be eligible for those sorts of funds to do these things. So again, another component of, of success there. And I didn't touch on all of the items, but they were all very interesting and I'm excited about all of them. The monuments, for example, I think that the monument wall was a very, very neat tribute and a way to do it. One of the conversations we've been having recently with Veterans Affairs is about adding a monument for the, the more recent wars. And I think it was mentioned or noted in the wall as the wars in Afghanistan. You know, or some sort of additional tribute there that, that's missing currently that we want to add. So another way to bring all that together. I'm sure I didn't hit on all of them. I know Bill touched on the safety on Route Two. That's a big one as well. So multimodal access, et cetera. Anyway, I will stop there and just say thank you. There's, there's so many things here that we can, we can use and, and to develop our town and make it more appealing and prosperous for our residents, our businesses, et cetera. So I'm very excited. Thank you, UMass, for, for taking on this project with us and. and for all the work the students did, Professor Zekus, for, you know, helping make this happen.
Yeah, and if I can, I'd just like to, to echo what everyone else has said and say thank you. It's been really great working with all of you this semester. And I know that you, you know, you kind of got dealt a crummy hand with having your semester cut short and having to complete this work, you know, from home or wherever you may be. And I really appreciate everyone coming through and getting us a final product. I know that it's not easy. I know the amount of work that goes into these. So, yeah, this is a beautiful final product, and I, I really appreciate the, the time that everyone took to get to know Irving residents. And being a newcomer myself, it was helpful to kind of have this be an excuse to tag along to some things and, and, because I'm still getting to know our residents and business owners. So I really appreciate all of the work that you've done. And I appreciate all of the residents and business owners who came out to these meetings, including this one. It's really great to have people be engaged with a project like this. It, it allows it to reflect, you know, the actual people in the community and the desires, which I think it absolutely has.
If it's okay for me, just to add to all of that, I don't want to bore you all with echoing everything that's been said. So, so I share all of the sentiments. I also just want to thank the Board of Selectmen and the voters who supported us doing this work. I came to you three years ago and asked you if you would support the idea of doing a master planning project and if you would let me work with a team of students. And you showed interest in either having an intern or having maybe participation in a, a school semester. And I don't know that everybody knew what it could become. And the first attempt didn't work, and you're still with it, and you moved the money, and you, you allowed us to contract with them. So thank you for allowing us this space to do a project like this. We haven't done this in quite some time. My hope for this was that somebody with a creative vision that the students have clearly brought to us would hear our, our concerns and hear our challenges and take their fresh perspective and give us some really creative ideas that maybe we wouldn't come up with on our own. And I was excited going through this final product this week, realizing that I had done what I had hoped. And I'm excited that the residents who have been able to join us today and the business owners who have seen this, and all have seen this. And I, I'm excited that we hopefully will have a springboard to what these next projects look like. So thank you again for having trust in this process. So thank you.
You made, made me recall one thing I wanted to add, Brian, which is, you know, specifically, this collaboration has been, you know, amazing to see what, what came out of it. And I hope that there's opportunities in the future with, you know, the, with UMass, the school architecture, et cetera, to, to do things that, that benefit both students' growth and, and knowledge as well as the town and endeavors, other endeavors we may have. So, you know, from my personal perspective, from what I've seen and what went into it, I think it's a collaboration we'd love to do in the future if there's opportunities for both sides.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Brian, may I have a quick word? Thanks. I really appreciate all of the comments and the insightful questions. And I just want to say that, Mr. Smith, you just alluded to the notion that the kind of meaningfulness of the experience goes both ways. I think if I could speak on behalf of myself and the students and myself, that we got a lot out of the experience as well. We're happy that you see yourselves reflected in this document, in this work. And it was a great experience for the students as well to be able to engage, to be able to follow through and present tonight. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, if there isn't anything else, then I don't think we have any further questions, Mariah, do we?
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
Okay, I will just say the, the students, you did an amazing job. As Mariah mentioned, with COVID and everything else, the challenges that, that have been put forth. This format for our meetings is, I don't know, 21 days old. So we're, we're just getting used to it ourselves, and you, you did an amazing job presenting to us. So thank you. And maybe it was easier than a roomful of people watching you. But I also appreciate all the people who came out from the town and shared their questions and thoughts on this project. So it will be around for a long time for us to, to work from, and we're excited about it. That is our last piece of business tonight. So unless anyone else on the board, Brian, Mariah, has anything else, then I will just say thank you again to everyone for putting this together, making this happen, the town, townspeople, businesses, UMass, students, professors, everyone. And I can guarantee you, the board has questions. I know we didn't ask any tonight. There's a lot to digest. And we do have the full document, all 86 pages, to, to go through more than once. So I'm sure we will reach out and let you know if there's things that we have questions on. But the lack of questions wasn't because we don't have them. We just saved them until we read through everything. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second. We adjourn.
And there was a second.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Enjoy your summer.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Who's it?
I don't know.